Oh, thank you.
Mike Searle. Your agenda when it comes around.
I'm sorry.
You're okay. I can bring my computer down. I don't know if it's on your agenda either.
Well, good evening, everyone. Welcome to the Ferndale City Council meeting for Monday, May 12th, 2014. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. Sherilyn, would you call the roll, please?
Certainly. Bear with my voice tonight. I don't feel as bad as I sound. Councilmembers Lennon, Martin, Polika, Piana, Mayor Coulter.
Here, yes, thank you. We have a quorum. Councilman Lennon is on his way from Lansing and hopes to arrive shortly, I understand, so hold out for him. The next item of business would be the approval of the agenda. What is council's pleasure on the agenda this evening?
I would move that we approve the agenda as presented.
I support.
Moved by Martin, supported by Piana. Any discussion? Sherilyn, you want to call the roll again?
Yeah. Councilmembers Martin, Polika, Piana, Mayor Coulter.
Yes, thank you. The agenda is adopted. Next item of business is presentations, and we have two presentations. And the first one this evening will be from the Ferndale Public Schools. And I see our Ferndale Public School Board Member Amy Butter is in attendance this evening. Hi, Amy.
Good evening, Mayor, Council. I have a whole lot of things to tell you about. This is the month of May, and for those of you who are, have any connection to the schools, you know that the month of May is extremely busy as we finish up all the spring activities and start up the summer activities in our district. And so if you see any Ferndale students or parents and they look a little harried, you can, you can understand why, there's just so much going on. First of all, I want to extend thanks to those of you on the council and anyone else out in the audience or out in the community for supporting our school's activities over the weekend. We had some great fundraisers. We had a PTSA Arts and Crafts show at the high school. We had a Dodge Test Drive fundraiser for the athletic boosters. We had a baseball alumni game. We had a Ferndale Arts Boosters flower sale. We had all kinds of things going on this weekend, and I really appreciate seeing people from the community come out and support those, those events and support our booster groups and our kids. I wanted to update you on a couple of our athletes from our district who have signed their letters of intent to play for some college teams. We have two kids over at University High School. Anthony Martin just signed last week. He's going to be playing basketball for Mary Grove. And Jason Penn, also from University High School earlier, also signed to play basketball for University of Michigan Dearborn. And so we extend our congratulations to those two athletes. I want to just, a few upcoming events that are coming up that I thought would be of interest to people in the community. One is the Roosevelt Primary School is having its kindergarten kickoff, and that's Thursday, May 29th, from 6:00 to 8:00 p.m. That's for incoming kindergarteners. Also at Roosevelt is the annual June Fair, coming up Friday, June 6th. It's our very big district event. It happens every year. It's been going on for years and years. And they have music performances. They have all kinds of games for the kids. They have, you know, lots of food to eat and lots, and lots and lots of things to do for families. So come on over to Roosevelt. It's a big PTA fundraiser for that school, and it's always a fun time. As you know, we are undergoing the process to find a new superintendent for our district, and I wanted to let the council know that we are well into that process. The job has been posted, and we have had a few applications come in. The deadline, I believe, is June 3rd, and we're told that the majority of the applications come in on June 3rd. So we'll be looking forward to seeing, seeing who applies, and we'll be narrowing that down to, you know, the top candidates and the interviews we have scheduled for June 7th, Saturday, June 7th. And those will be all happening in an open meeting, and so we'll be, that's what's scheduled right now for our superintendent search process. I just wanted to offer congratulations to our Ferndale Teachers of the Year, and I have three names to read to you. From Roosevelt, Amanda Darling. From Ferndale Middle School, Tracy Yax. And from Ferndale High School, Sarah Struzick, sorry. And we would like to extend our congratulations to them for, for their efforts this year. Of course, last week was Teacher and Staff Appreciation Week, and so we were exchanging stories about our favorite teachers and all the great work that our teachers and staff do in our district, and it was really a lovely, lovely week. I wanted to let you know about graduation. The council will be receiving invitations to our commencement ceremonies, and I know a couple of you have already asked about these, and so I just wanted to let you know, give you a preview. Ferndale High School graduates will be walking across the stage on Wednesday, May 28th, and that will be out at the Ultimate Soccer Arena, which is, you know, a little bit of a drive up, up, up north. And this will be the second year that we're having it at Ultimate Soccer. It's a nice venue. The University High School graduation is May 29th.
Amy, what time?
You know, I don't have that written down. I believe it's probably 7:00, but I can let you know for sure, like I said, you should be receiving more official invitations for that. But yeah, I imagine it'll be 7:00. It's usually right around that time.
Thank you.
UHS is May 29th, the very next day. And then the next week, we have Adult Ed, which is June 4th, and our Digital Learning Center graduation, which is June 5th. So there'll be a lot of proud parents walking around and, and having graduation parties in the next coming weeks. I know that everyone in our community loves to come out to our concerts that we have in our, in our school community, and I wanted to alert you to a few of those that are coming up in this month of May. May 14th at the high school, there's a dance performance, and those are going to be Ferndale High School and also kids from Casa, and that's May 14th. I think it's 6:30 or 7:00. May 15th is the Ferndale High School Choir Concert, and May 20th is the Ferndale High School Orchestra Concert. And I'm not leaving out band. I just am not mentioning them because theirs was last week. And so I'm sorry if you missed it. I did get to go to that one, and it was a really, really a great concert. We have some really talented kids in our district. Just a few more dates I want to just point out. Memorial Day, of course, we will have kids marching in Memorial Day Parade for the band, the band kids, and the school board will be marching that day. May 13th, Tuesday, is a Red Cross Blood Drive at Ferndale High School, and I know that's a great opportunity for members of the community to come out and support our schools. And last but not least, Tuesday, May 27th, is our next school board meeting. So that's all I have for you tonight.
That is a busy schedule. Any questions about me? Thank you as always for the update. Thanks, Amy.
All right, thanks.
Our next presentation is a Poppy Week Proclamation. And Frank, I'm going to ask you to come up because you are the, you are the guy that makes this happen every year.
Thank you.
How are you, sir?
Thank you. Go ahead. You, you want me to read my statement first?
I'll read it. We have a proclamation that I will read, and then I'll, then I'll give the floor to you. How is that? So this is the City of Ferndale Proclamation for Poppy Week, May 11th to the 17th. That week will have a special national significance because of its designation as National Poppy Week, a period when the emphasis is on raising funds for a broad project of unquestionable merit. And Americans enthusiastically support this annual tribute to their war dead, which provides funds for the rehabilitation and increased comfort of those deserving disabled veterans of all wars. And the sale of this flower of remembrance again will be handled by the American Legion and the VFW veterans with its auxiliary units. Now therefore, I, David Coulter, Mayor of the City of Ferndale, officially declare and proclaim the week of May 11th to the 17th, 2014, as Poppy Week in the City of Ferndale, and urge all citizens to support this sale, which has great significance for the living victims of war.
Well, thank you. Thank you, council and mayor. I have a short statement to make on behalf of the veterans. In the past 10 years of the, of the wars, over 60,000 men and women have been wounded. Most of the veterans have returned home. Many returned to the hospitals to make their lives livable once again through surgeries, prosthetics, and many needed psychiatric help. They need our help, too. The medical costs to our veterans are covered through the VA, but thanks that we take for granted is that they need simple things like toothpaste, socks, stamps, shaving needs, mouthwash, books, and much more if not. In this economy, it's easy to forget others, but we cannot afford to forget our veterans, those wonderful people, just like all of us before them, put in their years of service to protect our borders and our country. 100% of this money collected from poppy sales is donated to the Veterans Hospital. May is the month where we recognize all veterans from other, all services, VFW, PRV, DAV, AMBETS, and so on, Marine Corps Legion, and so on. Be it the ones at the hospital or the rehab centers, be it the ones currently fighting the wars in Iraq and Afghanistan to keep us safe, and for the ones who have already given their lives for our country and left their families in need to be at home. May ends with Memorial Day, but on May 15th, 16th, and 17th, we celebrate Poppy Days. We recognize the whole week of Poppy Days as the proclamation has been said, so people can well ahead recognize us being out there with the red poppy here. Our chance to do our part for those who are not doing theirs and doing their own part. Please reach deep into your pockets this year. We desperately need your help. Show your fellow veterans that you care and all the soldiers who are protecting our country. And we can only say that many thanks, and especially the thanks to them. So God bless our veterans and God bless America.
Thank you.
So again, we appreciate it. The 15 is our major drive. I myself will be out there. It'd be my...
Where will folks see you, Frank?
My usual spot on Wilford and Nine Mile. This will be my, actually, 32nd year right there. And lucky me, I've not got hit yet, even though the city has given me a vest, but to me, it feels that it's a target for somewhere to go after. I appreciate their safety concerns. So today, I will be, I'll be coming up to you to get your donations and throughout the audience. And again, we appreciate your proclamation for our veterans.
Happy to do it, Frank.
Thank you. We got the special ones here. She doesn't bring a can, but I assigned a picture to get the money in a can.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you much.
Thank you.
And I will trade you. I'll give you a proclamation, too. How's that? All right. Frank, once again, thank you for organizing this every year. We really do appreciate it, and as do our veterans. So thank you, sir.
As you know, the Memorial Day Parade, most of the veterans that we have are kind of, well, the World War II and World War I, create that, and so on, a lot of them have not been able to make the trek of marching the parade, but the people who march the parade, we take their honor, and I know you guys do. And again, to signify, it is one of the longest parades to recognize the veterans, and we appreciate your honor and something. Thank you again.
Thank you, Frank. I'm going to add a third presentation just because I believe I saw our county commissioner, Helene Zach, enter, and Helene, as she often does, comes and gives us an update about what's happening in Oakland County government. Commissioner Zach.
I appreciate. Good evening, everybody.
Good evening.
I do want to remind everybody about the Adoption Challenge, and we are one of 50 organizations in Oakland County that are part of the Rachel Ray ASPCA Grant, Challenge Grant. And if we double our amount of animal adoptions to 2014, in 2014, we could win $100,000 and be entered into another group to win more money after that. So there will be a whole series of different adoption events, additional ones to help us do that. And I do encourage people to go online to the Oakland County website and friend, you know, go on Facebook Friends, read about these different adoption events, spread the word. We would love to have that opportunity to increase adoptions. Been hearing from a lot of residents, I've heard a lot of different emails from Ferndale residents, there have been some complaints about some, about a particular kennel in Farmington Hills. And one of the things that our Animal Care Center does is they do inspections of kennels to make sure that they're okay, just like the Oakland County Health Department goes out and inspects restaurants. So they are watching this kennel. I do want to assure people, I've looked at the regulations, they are supervising, you know, part of the process, just like if a restaurateur has violations, they haven't, they're cited, and they have an opportunity to repair them. So the same thing with this kennel. They are being supervised and observed. I just want people to know that, and we, you know, as Board of Commissioners, are watching that that does happen. I hear from a lot of people about water, and frankly, I think the best article that I have read, I encouraged people to read Cranes last week. They have a very thorough explanation of the complexity of the water issue. And at this point, the counties, the three counties and the city of Detroit have been ordered by the bankruptcy judge to mediate, try and mediate the situation on a water authority. However, I do not believe that they've met yet, and that's where we stand. And again, my goal for all of us is to have clean, safe water at an affordable price. And I think that we all share that. And right, you know, the deal that was presented to Oakland County was not a good deal, and I couldn't stand behind it. And frankly, I'm voting for all of us. I'm going to vote at the table on that, but it's an important issue. I also want to talk about another issue that's important in Oakland County, the issue of roads. And so that people understand that the Road Commission for Oakland County is a separate operating entity from Oakland County Government, and Mayor Coulter knows that. So my oversight as Oakland County Commissioner is that we do appoint the road commissioners every two years, and they're the Board of Commissioners that oversee operations and approve the budget, and we do contribute some funding into the Road Commission. I unfortunately, or fortunately, I have never voted for one of the road commissioners yet in my 12 years, because I don't like the process. We're not interviewing candidates, and so I can't stand behind the board. There is movement to look at trying to get the Road Commission to be absorbed under Oakland County. And I know that they did this in Macomb County. And frankly, I would favor this, and I would favor, I would love to reduce overhead. I see no reason to have, you know, a head of Road Commission, additional human resources, financial, I could see them run very effectively as a department. I don't think it's a universal idea, but there are many of us that feel maybe the time is right. Road Commission did a presentation at our last Board of Commissioners meeting, particularly because they're aware of that, trying to tout that they run things better than their counterparts that don't have road commissions, and that we have better safety in Oakland County because there is a road commission. But if you put safety as a concern of any operating entity, you can manage it. And so, you know, we will see how this plays out over, you know, the next couple months. Yes?
May I, I would like to express my public support for that change. I think road commissions are an outdated model. While important that we need to fund our roads, I think that the myopic view of just road winding, and if you look at how Oakland County is allocating their road funds, a lot of it's going to road expansion, and I think that's a policy that would be better, be better driven by the Oakland County Commissioners.
Well, I hope that at least it would be a, a new set of eyes looking at it, and I, I'm glad to hear your support on that.
Well, I would just add that the argument has always been, well, if you put it under county government, that that will politicize it because the politicians will decide what projects to fund. But the reality is, the county road commission is politicized because they're political appointments anyway, so you can't really remove politics from roads. So I support your efforts to try to put that as more efficiently under a county government. Absolutely.
Working on it. Finally, as you may recall, I serve on, I also serve on Public Services Committee, and we did a study last year on how to make Oakland County safer, you know, you know, looking at the issue of gun violence, and issued a report last year, and we've been carrying out some of the recommendations. And we have done three public service announcements, and they have been playing in Ferndale, you know, on cable regularly. I don't know anybody that's seen it yet, but, you know, the first one was talking about when you buy video games, that you're looking at the parental rating, so that, you know, just like movies, there's ratings on games. The second one that we issued is on gun lock safety, and that will be reissued again. And then the third one is mental health. This is, May is Mental Health Month. And Diana Lewis has done all of them for us for free. They're like 30 minutes, or 30 seconds. They're really lovely pieces. And then as a result, we are going to have a Gun Lock Safety Day on June 6th, countywide, we hope. There will be a press conference following on the Tuesday, which is, I think, June 3rd at 2:00 p.m. And the initiative, and I found out that our department here, our police department does have gun safety locks. And then when you read some of these tragic stories where children get hold of guns and they get shot, it's because people aren't using, using the right tools to protect the safety, like locking their guns. So we do actually have gun locks here in Ferndale. And so part of the idea is to promote this safety, responsible gun ownership. And I'm not saying yea or nay, I'm not, you know, you know, that's, I'm not taking position on that, but obviously, if you are a gun owner, practice good safety. So that's part of that initiative, and we'll be running that public safety announcement along in June again. Any questions? Thank you.
Thanks for coming. All right. Next item of business would be Call to Audience. Call to Audience is up to 30 minutes now. Oops, Frank?
Yeah, I just, if you don't mind.
I don't mind, sir.
I forgot to, and I'd like to let people know about these poppies. First of all, these poppies that I have in my hand are handmade by the veterans at the hospital. This is the only way they can do their thanks to everyone that donate money. Now, the poppy is a national flower for the American Legion, and this came back in 1917 when First World War I was held back then. One of the conflicts was held in Belgium, and it was a conflict that was held in the, in the country there against Germany in the field called Flanders Field. On Flanders Field, poppies were grown through there. Now, Flanders Field was named after a doctor that was part of the United States Army that took care of all the servicemen that were dying during that war. So there was no name for that field, actually. So the field was named after him, and then to signify for what he did, the veterans did, is they brought this poppy. So when you see, when you see this, this is, like I say, our national poppy. The VFW has theirs, everybody else has theirs. They are also handmade, so they all go to purpose. When I see someone saying that we got one, they show me theirs, I know they got it from someone. So we're not, we're not making, you know, qualms by saying, hey, you can't buy theirs, buy ours. We, we're all putting our money together for our veterans. Again, I thank you so much, and good night.
Thanks, Frank. Thank you. All right. Now, Call to Audience. Call to Audience is up to 30 minutes now to speak. Anything on your mind that's not on the agenda, because I'll give you an opportunity to speak to that when we get to that portion of the agenda, but three minutes, all yours. State your name, your address, and tell us what's on your mind. Anyone in the audience like to address us this evening?
Yes.
Good evening.
Hi, I'm Suzanne, Ferndale Beautification Commission, and this is Lloyd from DPW.
Hi, Lloyd.
So the Beautification Commission, along with the DPW, would like to invite everyone to our annual Arbor Day Tree City USA planting. It's going to be at Oppenheimer Park. We have like a forest going there. And it's May 28th, a Wednesday, 11:00 a.m. And like I said, everyone's invited. We're hopefully going to get a bunch of schoolchildren there and actually plant the tree, get the kids to help, and we might have a surprise. We might.
A surprise.
But anyway, I hope everyone can come.
What kind of tree?
It hasn't been determined yet. Usually what we do is go to the nursery and see what species are available and what's the healthiest, and we put a nice diversity mix into the park.
Great.
So, thank you.
Thanks, Suzanne. Thank you. Is there anyone else who would like to address council this, this evening during Call to Audience?
Paul Kish, 707 West Hazelhurst. Good evening.
Good evening.
On March 6th, 2012, I came to this room for the first time for a Board of Review hearing. I waited while the one member said, where's the knife for the cream cheese? Has anyone seen the knife for the cream cheese for my bagel? The other member said, I'm so tired I could fall asleep right now. I was up half the night last night. All this was one hour after they both had a lunch break from 12:00 to 1:00 p.m. There were only two members present, along with Sabra O'Brien, Oakland County Assessor. I tried to hand the pictures that I, of my house, to the one member who was so tired. He replied, you expect me to look at those pictures? I handed them to the other member who was trying to find the knife. I showed the tired member this picture of the house behind me, which is the boarded-up vacant house. This is what I've had to look at for 22 years. He replied, look at what they had to look at for 22 years, and he was talking about my house. I replied, that house has been boarded up and vacant all that time. He said nothing. April Lynch, your copy of the Board of Review form has three signatures on it. Please explain in a correspondence how there were two members here that night, and there's three signatures. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who would like to address council this evening?
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of council.
Good evening.
My name is Joe McHugh, and I am a citizen of...
My name is Joe McHugh, and I am a citizen of, well, the area. Berkeley is where I call home, and I want to thank you for allowing me to, or for inviting me to speak this evening, and for your aggressive leadership on key important issues, such as women's rights, gay rights, and environmental progressive issues. Those issues are demonstrative, and the positions that we have taken on that are demonstrative of liberty. And the reason why I bring that up is because the other side of the aisle likes to talk about liberty as wrapping yourself in the flag and maybe, you know, having an attack on various places, Syria, wherever the case may be. That is not, that's not what liberty is. Liberty is, as defined in the Constitution, as defined in the Declaration of Independence, that all men are created equal, right? And you have done an exemplary job on that. And so I wanted to thank you for that, and I wanted to thank you for your leadership on anti-fracking legislation and for the ordinance that you passed. And also, just to let you know that, as we discussed earlier, that I am running for state representative in this district. I am the only veteran that is seeking the seat, and I would appreciate your support. The platform calls for clean, green, and legal. It is extremely environmentally progressive and sustainable. I am in favor of policies that would reduce waste across the board and encourage businesses to aggressively pursue that. The green aspects, as well as water, anti-fracking, because we need to protect our water in order to preserve and to grow our economic base in this area. And finally, from a legalization standpoint, it's important to aggressively defend women's rights, gay rights at the state level, and as well from an economic standpoint, and from a liberty standpoint, I'm in favor of legalization of cannabis. And the reason why is because we are unfairly jailing minorities and other recreational and as well as medicinal users of marijuana, and that has an unfair, has an unfair effect on those, on those users going to jail. And as a result, and we're spending $150 million a year to put them in prison when, when they're doing nothing worse than having a cigarette. So, so for that, I want to thank you again for inviting me to speak on this behalf. And for more information, please visit votejoemcugh.com. Thank you, sir. And also, thank you to Amy for recognizing the teachers, for their good work, and that's all I have. So thank you, and I look forward to working with you. It's going to be a lot of fun.
Very good.
Thanks.
Thank you. Thanks for coming. Is there anyone else who would like to address council this evening? All right, seeing none, we'll move on to the consent agenda. The consent agenda are items that council considers routine, and we enact them in one motion unless something is pulled from the consent agenda this evening. But let me read that first. Item A is the approval of the minutes of the regular meeting held April 28, 2014. Item B is the approval to proclaim June 2014 as Gay Pride Month in the city of Ferndale, as submitted by our Mayor Potem. Item C is the approval to adopt the resolution for the city's request for reimbursement from Oakland County under the West Nile Virus Program, and for the city clerk to be authorized to sign it, and to approve the purchase of Natural R XRT and Natural R G30 pesticides at a cost of $3,348, $772 after reimbursement from Oakland County. Item D is the approval to adopt ordinance number 1153, amending Chapter 2, Administration, Section 2 through 4, Appearance Tickets of the Ferndale Code of Ordinances. Item E is the approval to adopt ordinance 1154 and 1155, amending Chapter 12, Misdemeanor Offenses, Article 1, in general, Sections 12 through 6 and 12 through 8, as submitted by the city attorney. F is the approval to pay the invoice from BNS Electrical for $4,891 charged to the building and grounds maintenance, as submitted by the fire chief. Item G is the approval to purchase and install the Pilot Wireless Access Control System for the park restrooms, presented by Howlett Technology, to be charged to the Kulak Community Center. Item H is the approval of the sale of the Western 10 feet of Lot 314 of the Woodland Park subdivision to the owners of 418 West Maplehurst, which is Lot 315 of said Woodland Park subdivision, for $1, and for the city attorney and the purchaser to draft a mutually agreeable purchase agreement for execution by the mayor and city staff. Item I is the approval of revised resolution approving the combined Brownfield 381 work plan for 981 East Saratoga. And finally, J, approval of the bills and payroll as submitted by the city manager's office, subject to the review of the council finance committee. What is council's pleasure on the consent agenda this evening?
I move to approve the consent agenda as presented.
Support. It's been moved by Piana and supported by Martin. Is there any discussion on the consent agenda?
Mr. Mayor, if we could, I'd like to read the proclamation for designating June as Gay Pride Month.
May be great. Oh, I thought you said you wanted. I can.
The city of Ferndale is a city rich in diversity, and this diversity is demonstrated in the people who live, work, shop, and socialize in our city. We, the City Council of Ferndale, value this diversity and appreciate and celebrate the rich variation of persons in our city. We benefit from the multiple talents, viewpoints, and cultural backgrounds of all our citizens, and the city is proud of its American heritage that accepts and welcomes diverse people, and we believe in a society that treats people on the basis of their intrinsic value as human beings, without prejudice and unfair discrimination based on age, gender, race, color, religion, marital status, national origin, sexual orientation, or physical challenges. And we understand and appreciate the cultural, civic, and economic contributions of the gay, lesbian, bisexual, and transgender communities to the greater community of Ferndale, particularly in regards to the city's resurgence over the past 25 years. And we recognize June as the month celebrated worldwide each year with pride by GLBT communities, and that June 2014 is the 45th anniversary of the beginning of the modern gay and lesbian rights movement, which began in June of 1969 in the great city of New York. Therefore, be it resolved that the city council recognizes and declares June 2014 as Gay Pride Month in the city of Ferndale, and we pledge to continue our efforts at creating and maintaining a city which is free and open city, that provides equal opportunity, fair treatment, and human dignity for all people, and that a copy of this resolution be sent to neighboring cities that border the great city of Ferndale, to the executive of the county of Oakland, to the governor of the state of Michigan, our U.S. representatives, to the House of Representatives, and our senators.
Excellent. And I would only add that I see Julia Music in the audience today. She is the Chair of Ferndale Pride this year, and we look forward on May 31st, Saturday, May 31st, to another excellent Ferndale Pride. So welcome, Julia. Any other discussion or comments on the consent agenda?
I did want to touch a point on item G.
Yes. Approval to purchase and install the Pilot Wireless Access Control System for the park restrooms.
Yeah, I just wanted to, to share that this is one of those items that was on several of our surveys in regards to our parks, where people were very frustrated that we couldn't have access to our parks, park restrooms, because they were locked most of the time. So this will allow us to remotely control the restroom doors. We're pilot, we're piloting them in three of the parks right now. It'll be Gary Park, Martin Road Park, and Harding Park. And I'm not sure what the time period on that pilot phase. I would assume three months. And then we'll go from there and see how that works.
Excellent. Yeah, good. Any other comments, questions?
The only other item that I wanted to raise, I have a question, and it's about item H, the Livernoy property. And my only question is, are there any other properties on Livernoy that have this issue? So once, if this issue is resolved, if this issue is resolved tonight, are we going to have another property coming back to us?
That is a good question, Derek. I know you know the answer to that.
I do, and in your packet we included a map of the six other properties. There's seven, there's seven total properties that have almost identical situations. If this is a favorable solution to council tonight, we are anticipating proactively sending a letter to the other six and actually making this available to them, because it only makes sense to offer to all of them if this is an acceptable process or step for this, for those properties.
I agree with you.
Good question. All right, any last questions or comments? Sherlin, would you call the role, please?
Councilmembers Polica.
Yes.
Piana.
Yes.
Martin.
Yes.
Mayor Coulter.
You barely got that out. Yes, thank you, that the consent agenda is adopted. Moving on to the regular agenda, we have just one item this evening, and that is the appointment of Wagner Whitehead and Timothy Brennan to the Arts and Cultural Commission for terms ending December 31st, 2015. And Dan, you're our Arts Commission liaison, you want to introduce that?
Sure, I'd be happy to. This continues the process of filling the open seats on the reconstituted, if you will, Ferndale Arts and Cultural Commission. Both of these candidates have excellent background in art and music. One is a professor at Oakland University, and one is involved in music education as well. Both have been active in the community and local nonprofits and charities, and I think you'll remember Mr. Brennan from his work with the Memorial Committee as well. So both are excellent candidates to kind of add to the diversity and robustness of the group, and I would highly recommend we accept them both.
In fact, would that be a motion?
I would like to move to confirm the appointments of Wagner Whitehead and Timothy Brennan to the Ferndale Arts and Cultural Commission for terms ending December 31st, 2015.
Support. Moved by Martin and supported by Polica. Is there any discussion on that item? I would only add, as we have so many times, that it's impressive to have people with such extensive backgrounds and experiences willing to step up for absolutely no pay to, I know. Oh, we doubled it this year.
Yeah, we did.
To support our community. So I want to thank both of those gentlemen and all the folks that stepped up and volunteered on behalf of our community, so thanks. Sherlin, would you call the role, please?
Councilmembers Piana.
Yes.
Martin.
Yes.
Polica.
Yes.
Mayor Coulter.
Yes, thank you, that item is adopted. So that concludes our regular agenda this evening. Call the council. I see our police chief is here. Police Chief Collins, anything for the good of the community this evening?
To your honor. I have two things. First, I wanted to thank the public. I know that a school board member mentioned earlier about the fundraiser we had the week, over the weekend for the sports boosters. Some of members of council showed up and drove dodges for us. But I would like to call out some attention to the owner of Northland Chrysler, who put that on and assisted us, and although we didn't make our goal, the most you can make is 5,000, we got close, and that owner, Joe Moreno, kicked in the rest of the money out of their own pocket just to make it up to the maximum, which was a very nice gesture, but I appreciate all the public support that we had for that. Something I have for you today is, as you may recall from two weeks ago, that this is Police Week, and this is the week that we honor the officers that work the road and keep us safe. And May 15th, along with everything else apparently in May, is also Police Memorial Day, which is when we honor the officers that have fallen in the line of duty. And we will have a short ceremony tomorrow morning at 10:00 AM for anybody who would like to come. We do have the youngsters from Roosevelt Primary School, third graders, coming to say the pledge for us, and so long as the weather holds and it's not going to be storming with lightning, we would like to have them say the pledge for us. So all are welcome. We're not going to have an open house this year, and because our building isn't quite done yet, we're getting very, very close. So next year, we'd like to have, invite everybody in to see the facility, but we're just not there yet, and we couldn't make that happen this year, although that was our, kind of our original plan. Thank you.
Great. Thank you, chief. Fire Chief Sullivan, anything from the fire department for the good of the community this evening?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, council, we had a fire over the weekend. I'd just like to warn people when they're using any kind of pest removal device, if you have to light it on fire, stuffing it in your wall is not a good idea, though the smoke may go into the walls and get rid of the pest, it may also catch your house on fire. Luckily, we stopped it in the garage wall before it burned down most of the garage and house. So you got to read these things very carefully. Many of them are dangerous with pesticides, but if you have to light them on fire, they also are a heat source and could create quite a bit of damage to your home. So be cautious of road and removal devices. If you're doing it yourself, read all the instructions. Thank you.
Good learning opportunity. Thank you, chief. Derek, anything else from community and economic development?
Nothing.
All right. Michael Larry, anything from the special events world this evening?
Hi, y'all. As many of you might already know, this month is a busy month for us, and it starts with Cleaning the Ferndale Up, which is Saturday, May 17th, this weekend. And if you want to volunteer, there's still time to register online at cleantheferndaleup.com. On Sunday, the 18th of May, we will be host, our city will be hosting Girls on the Run 5K. It's sponsored by the Metro Detroit YMCA. This event's main site location is on Plantavon between West Nine Mile and Withington from 8:00 AM to 1:00 PM, so there will be a street closure. And then, of course, the run route itself will be a temporary closure throughout the route itself, but it's a very fast, quick, it won't impact the community much for maybe like 20 minutes, different durations throughout the time that they're running through. Of course, this is another way of us as a community to encourage people that exercise is a good way to go, so that we focus on our own health as well as the health of the community. On Monday, May 26th, we have Ferndale's Memorial Day Parade, which is Michigan's oldest continuous celebration of the holiday, and it too will also begin at 10:00 AM, and will once again be parading down West Nine Mile to Livernoy. On Saturday, May 31st, we have the Rainbow Run 5K, 2K, which will also be taking place on the same day as Ferndale Pride. The Rainbow Run will be stationed at Plantavon as well, between West Nine Mile and Withington from 8:00 AM to 1:00 PM, as Ferndale Pride will be celebrating the lesbian, gay, bisexual, transgender pride, and it will be held from noon to 11:00 PM from Woodward to Plantavon on West Nine Mile. If you have any questions, you can certainly call me at 546-1573. Thank you.
I don't have a question, but a comment. I'll make the comment, I don't know if you have anything to add, but one item of note in the special events world that we discovered this last week was that the DIY Festival has made the decision that they're not going to conduct their festival again this year. They're going to wait until 2015, and I just want the residents to be aware that that's happening. There was an issue with the fact that East Nine Mile is going to be repaved during the time that that festival would be held. There was nothing we could do about that. MDOT tells us when the roads are going to get repaved, so there was no way around it. We were working with them to try to figure out another way to configure that event, but Chris Johnston made the decision, and I talked to him, and he was very open and friendly about it, and said, you know, it is just so much work to put it on and to move things around, it was just too much. So I think he's going to take a summer off and bring DIY back bigger and better than ever in 2015. So I wanted to make residents aware of that.
Okay.
Thanks, Michael. Jill, anything from the Recreation Department?
Good evening. Just a couple of quick announcements. First, I'd like to start out by thanking Mike Kuzniar, the head R.C.E. girls soccer coach, and the girls' team. This coming Saturday, they will be hosting, for the third year in a row, our annual Saccharama event. This is the last day of games for our youth soccer league. All of our games will be held at the high school. The girls' team will be onsite, they'll be doing face painting. It's just a great experience for our kids. They absolutely love playing on the field over there, so we're looking forward to another great day this year as well. We have a couple of special events coming up. Coming up on June 7th is our annual bike rodeo at Geary Park from 10:00 to 2:00 PM. We work with the police department and fire department on this event. The police department will be onsite, providing bike safety checks, providing bike licenses to Ferndale residents, and also each child will be fitted for a helmet. Coming up on June 14th is our annual trunk and treasure sale, which is held at the city hall lot from 9:00 to 3:00. If you're looking, if you've done some spring cleaning already and have some stuff that you would like to sell, we are, we still have space available if you'd like to become a vendor, and applications are available at, on the city website, ferndalemi.gov. And that's all that I have. Thank you.
Excellent. Thanks, Jill. Lloyd, anything from the DPW area?
Nothing tonight.
All right, very good. Joe, anything from the Chief Innovation Officer this evening?
Nothing.
All right. Sherlin, anything from the Clerk's Office?
Bear with me. Just a reminder that dog tags expired December 31st. There's some confusion about that. Dog tags expire at the end of the year, so if you haven't licensed your dog in 2014, you're actually not in compliance with local laws and ordinances. We give you until June 1st to get your tag before the prices go up for all dog tags to $30 per dog, and starting June 2nd, I'm sorry. Starting on June 2nd, Oakland County will be going door to door, conducting their dog census to encourage compliance with the licensing laws. Just a note that- Just a note that I checked last week, we have issued in the neighborhood of 500 licenses this year, as opposed to over 1,400 last year. So there are a lot of dog owners still out there who have not licensed their dogs in 2014, and you could be liable for increased fees and fines, as well as a ticket. So please get into city hall or call the county, get your dog licensed.
And how much is it if you do it before June 1st?
Depends on whether your pet is spayed or neutered. It's $7.50 if they are, $15 if they are not.
Very good. Thank you, Sherlin. April, anything for the city manager's office?
Sure, I have a few things. I want to talk just a little bit more on the item that was on the consent agenda regarding the locks for the bathrooms. I want to talk a little bit about how excited that staff is that for the first time in a long time, we're going to pilot actually opening the restrooms throughout the day, not just during events. It is a pilot, because the reason they were closed was due to some extreme vandalism. But we actually met together as a team, and I want to thank this team, Chief Collins, Lloyd, Jill, and Joe, for sitting down and working to figure out how we could do that and be able to make sure that the bathrooms are safe, that we are able to address any issues that come up as soon as possible. So we will also be hiring a few park rangers this summer. It's a new program that we're piloting as part of keeping the bathrooms open. And these two physicians will help go through the parks throughout the day and into the evening to make sure that the bathrooms remain clean, that there isn't vandalism and things of that nature. So it's in parts of a whole theme of trying to really allow our parks to be open for the general public and to be used, fully used, because we do have beautiful parks. We actually have wonderful bathrooms that have been sitting closed for a long time. So we're really excited. We're kind of curious to see how this is going to grow. We're thinking about, by the time we get the locks, and it'll probably be about the first two weeks in June is when we hope to get them in, by June 15th, then the bathrooms will be open. So again, thank you to the team for really sitting down and figuring out how that could work. One more thing, too, and Lloyd didn't say anything, but his crew over the winter worked very, very hard and long hours, slaving over the snow. And now in spring, they're doing cleanup, and they've been working very hard as well to do that, not only within our downtown, but in our parks as well. And of course, have had challenging weather. It's like they cannot catch a break. But I just wanted to thank Lloyd for going the extra mile, really focusing his crew on putting the shine back in Ferndale, and we're very, very excited. I think you'll notice some significant improvements just here at city hall alone this week. So we just want to thank Lloyd and his team for all the work that they have done, and so excited to see spring coming. So that is all I have today.
Very good. Absolutely. Thank you. Dan, anything from the legal world this evening?
Just one item, your honor. The ordinance committee is looking at possible revisions to Chapter 28 of the Ferndale Code, and recommendations with respect to that matter should be coming on council's agenda for its next meeting.
Very good. Dan Martin, anything from your perspective?
Just one thing. Along the veins of the Memorial Day Parade, each year, there's this wonderful tradition in the Memorial Day Parade in Ferndale for Michigan's fallen foot float. And what this is, is an opportunity for residents, or really anyone, to get involved. And what happens is each person carries a placard with a picture and a name and the place that the soldier fell from Michigan. And it's really quite a moving experience, both to be a part of and to see, and it really, I think, adds a level of richness to our parade, and kind of bringing home the meaning of that day. So if you are interested in participating in walking with Michigan's fallen, they are meeting at 8:30 a.m. on Memorial Day at the corner of Livernoy and West Maplehurst. All are welcome, and you can pick up a placard of a soldier and march in the parade to honor their memory. So I'd highly encourage you to do it. It's really quite a tremendous experience. So that's it. Thank you.
Excellent. Councilman Polica.
Just a reiteration, Clean the Ferndale Up is this Saturday. 8:00 a.m. registration. We could use every able body. And the other thing is, in themes with the parks, one of our Parks and Recreation member, John Hardy, brought to my attention, a contest through a website called petsafe.com, and it's Bark for Your Park, Win $100,000 for a Dog Park. So we are registered. You can vote every day, and we encourage you to vote every day. You can go to www.petsafe.com and vote. Vote often.
When does the voting end?
The voting ends June 7th. It's from May 7th to June 7th, so it really just started. We registered ourselves on May 8th, and so far, we only have 55 votes. And there are some... Here's an interesting thing, is you have to go to each community in order to find out the votes. They don't have a tally. You have to go to each community. But there are communities that have thousands of votes, because they're huge. You know, they're major metropolitan cities that are competing, so.
So can we make sure we get that in our media, our communications, our...
Yes. We could also be one of four cities that win $25,000. And a $25,000 dog park is pretty impressive.
Better than we have now.
Exactly.
Excellent. Thanks.
That's all I have.
All right. Councilwoman Piana.
Nothing for this evening.